Howard must be on his way on SpaceX.
Yes, I am. Now you know what it looks like from the space.
Yeah, there he's on his way back.
Maybe.
He could be broadcasting from the future.
Well.
Yeah, I am.
Okay, I guess we can get started, everybody. Hello, everybody. I'm Steve Bajinski. I'm president of Rodkovan and Rodkovan and Rodkovan Hills. Welcome, everybody. Hey, John, would you mind if we mixed it up a little bit and had Michael Wood do the invocation today?
You bet.
Okay, Michael, would you like to do the invocation today?
Certainly will. Certainly will. Let's pray. God, we we thank you for the opportunity to come together as a community, a group that intends to serve your world. God, we ask that you would give us the wisdom and insight as to how you have us to move and to be part of a group and to to reach out to people in need and to serve those nonprofits and folks in our area. God, would you continue to give Steve the direction that you would have so we can do the work that you've called us in? God, thanks again for this day, and we ask for our nation and for our community, God, that you would present peace that would just blow our minds and know that the peace that you would create is definitely from your hands, which seems to be the only way possible here right now. And we ask that you'd give protection over folks with the coronavirus and the issues of medical. God, that you would give comfort and direction to our doctors in that regard as well. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Geez, that's awesome.
Okay, let's introduce our guest today. We have Donna Skoda. She's here visiting us. She's also our speaker today. Welcome, Donna.
You're welcome. I'm here. Hi, nice to see you all.
Hello, Donna. Thank you for joining us. We really appreciate it.
Oh, that's great. I've been on 100 million of these calls. You'd think I would learn the buttons by now, right?
I'm still learning. I think we all are. This COVID thing has got us all having no choice but to learn Zoom.
Oh, yeah, and these buttons are confusing, so.
And also my daughter Amanda and wife have joined us. Thank you, Amanda and Debbie.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other guests that I'm missing here?
Yeah, it looks like Joe Clark. He's a guest, isn't he? He hasn't been around for a while. Oh, it's summer break. I'm sorry, Joe.
Summer break. Bill, you don't. Thanks, Bill.
Yeah, I don't think Joe's had much of a summer break this summer. Anybody else have any guests they'd like to introduce? Okay, we'll move on. Let's see, today in history, I don't think Casey's here. So I did a little bit of research. Today in history, acting on a tip from a Dutch informer, a Nazi Gestapo agent captures a 15-year-old Jewish girl. Does anybody know who that was back in 1942?
Anne Frank.
Anne Frank, yeah.
Anne Frank, yes. Today in history is when Anne Frank was caught, and this was just on her 13th birthday and began writing a diary to talk about her experiences. And a couple of weeks later, her sister was going was asked to go to one of the concentration camps. And so that's when they went into hiding, and she kept that diary up throughout the whole whole ordeal for for two years. Unfortunately, they did get captured by the Nazis just about a month before the Germans surrendered. But very interesting with Anne Frank. Amanda knows a lot about that. Also, on this day in history, the first amputee runner competed in the Olympics. Does anyone know who that was? It was after. Who?
What date was it again?
It was this date in 2012, August 4th. An amputee competed in the Olympics, first one. It was Oscar Petruius. Everyone remembers that name now. And also, one more thing, Jesse Owens wins the long jump in Germany on August 4th, 1936. That really bumped Hitler out. And Louis Armstrong, it was his birthday, or actually, it was he was born in New Orleans in 1901 on this date. And I think that's it. If anybody else has any history they want to share, please do.
Yeah, I do. On this day, and I don't know what the year, my brother Mike was born. I don't know what year. I don't know how old we are.
The date in 1905, my father was born. He would have been 115 today.
Wow. That's quite a few hours.
That makes me old.
Anybody else want to share any birthdays? Okay, and as far as birthdays goes in our club here, we don't have any birthdays or anniversaries to share this week, unless I'm missing something. Does anybody have any birthdays else? And we just shared a couple. Anybody else have any birthdays? Okay, is Dr. Conkle here? And then looking over the list, I don't think he's here, is he? So we don't have a humor of the day. Does anyone have a joke they want to share?
I do.
Okay.
I I shared this on Facebook. I don't know if you guys saw it. Give a man a fish, he eats for a day. Teach a woman a garden in the whole neighborhood, get zucchini.
There's definitely some truth to that. And tomatoes and whatever else they're growing, right? Carl, any happy or sad dollars?
Well, if anybody have one, I've got a I've got a little sad dollar that we have to remember we're one country. And when that happens, it'll change into a happy dollar. We've got to come together as a country and be one. And today, we're certainly not. Hopefully, we can get there.
Couldn't agree more, Carl. We certainly all need to come together, especially in this times, and we'd be a better world for it. There is no doubt about that. I'd like happy dollar. Thank you, Donna, for joining us. That's my happy dollar. Appreciate it. Anybody else have some happy dollars?
Well, I got a sad dollar. My sister passed away last week. And she suffered an awful death. And in some respects, it was probably great that she did pass away rather than continue to suffer. But anyway, we're all missing her.
Our prayers are with you, Howard. Thank you very much for sharing that with us. And like you said, she's in a better place and her prayers are with you. Thank you.
I'm sure she is.
Sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a couple happy dollars, actually, if you guys take Venmo, because I never have cash. Just it's it has been a busy, busy summer for me, believe it or not, no vacation at all, although I am while my family is in Folly Beach this week, I am not wearing socks this week. That's my vacation for the summer. But lots of stuff going on. In addition to dealing with this COVID all year, I had exciting news. I do I did move into a new home a week ago, and my neighbors are outstanding. They bring wonderful delicious brownies across the street. So it's fantastic to be neighbor next door neighbors with Steve, and I didn't know that. I would have been willing to pay more for the house if I knew that Steve was down across the street. And and second, my book was published. I don't know if you had heard, but July 15th or so, my book finally is available. You can get it on Amazon, and I I hope you take an opportunity to check it out. So.
Yay. It's nice to see you.
Joe, what's the title of the book? Thank you. If the dance floor is empty, change the song. Very good.
Thank you, Joe, but I got some news for you. The reason you paid so much for your house is because you're my neighbor.
You better get big candy bars at trick or treating. That's all I know.
You should have moved in three and a half years earlier. You would have paid less. You know, the property value went up.
I hope people can trick or treat this year.
No, it was kind of a funny experience when Joe and I met the day he was moving in. Neither one of us knew, of course. And I was in a hat and sunglasses, and he was all working like a dog, and he comes walking up. We all looked at it. Holy smokes, you gotta be kidding. It was it was a fun Saturday morning when we found that out. Okay, anybody else?
Steve, I have a couple, if I may.
Sure. Yeah, please do.
First, I'd like to thank Dr. Clark because everything going on with Corona world and the communications from the schools, having two young children, I can tell you, are amazing. I mean, it's such a wealth of information, and the communication from Dr. Clark and his team has been awesome. So I thank you for that. As a as a parent of children in the school system, it means a lot that you take that time to give us good information and let us know what's going on. So from a parent, awesome. Thank you very much. The second one I have is I'm enjoying today for lunch, and I always turn my camera off when I'm chewing. It's just a habit of mine, but I'm having some delicious yams from an excellent place in Macedonia. If you haven't had it, I highly recommend it. I stopped there before our meeting today so that I could enjoy my number 12 beach club with my jalapeno chips. And if you can patronize that business, they are amazing. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Latise smiling over the storm over there. Oh, that's good. Anybody else? Okay, great. With that being said, I'd like to introduce our speaker.
If I, sorry, I'm a little late in coming here, Steve. So this may serve a multitude of you, and I just sent Dr. Clark a private message here. But I've been gifted a 55-gallon barrel of hand sanitizer. And so I don't know how that might serve us at Rotary or you and your business, but Dr. Clark, I sent you a little private message saying we could I'd be happy to, you know, help to supply to the schools or to, you know, whoever might need that, you know, for compliance and for safety. I don't have bottles, but it's the 55-gallon barrel, and I've got a big pump on the top of it, and we may be able to 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 help out wherever that might be needed. So let let me know where we might be able to serve you.
Okay, and if if we decide that we want to divide that up somehow, I may be able to get some bottles for you. So that's been one of our biggest challenges at SLC is because everyone's packaging hand sanitizers and disinfectants and stuff like that, there's shortage on bottles. So but we may be able to figure something out if if Dr. Clark decides that he wants to use it, but he needs to divide it up. Maybe we can figure something out. So.
Well, I mean, we will take whatever you can we whatever we can get, we would happily take. Just not in a 55-gallon trunk.
The other thing there's a shortage of is these trigger sprayers. So it took me about three and a half weeks. I got bottles of of disinfectant, but I couldn't get trigger sprayers. So I searched every day on the internet. And so anyway, there's a shortage. Sorry.
Yeah, you're preaching to the choir, John. I mean, that's what we do at SLC and long lead times on all that stuff, bottles, trigger sprayers, pump sprayers, all that stuff. So but we may be able to figure something out something out for Joe if we want to empty that drum. So we'll take a look at it. Okay, with that being said, I'd like to introduce our program speaker today. We have Donna Skoda. She's the health commissioner at Summit County. Thank you, Donna. I don't have your bio, so I'll let you introduce yourself. Welcome, Donna. Thank thank you for joining us.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. We've done a lot of these sort of meetups on Zoom so that we can actually inform individuals about the coronavirus COVID-19 in Summit County. So I'll be brief. I'll have remarks, and then I'll be glad to answer any questions if anyone has questions. So I'll kind of hit the highlights, and then if we need to, we can dive into it more deeply if we need to, okay? So today in Summit County, we have 3,170 confirmed cases. And that is an increase than what we've had. And to give you something in perspective, in June, we had 477 cases. In July, we had 1,211 cases. So our numbers have jumped significantly. We had usually, we were down in June to somewhere around 10 to 12 cases per day. Now we're averaging somewhere between 40 and 60 cases per day. And that isn't directly attributable just to more testing being available, because currently we are running into some testing shortages, but I'll talk about that in a minute. Unfortunately, in Summit County, we have had 220 deaths. Most of those, about 162 of those deaths, have been attributable to a connection to a long-term care facility. So somebody who may have been in an institution and or currently lived in an institution. So our community deaths have been somewhere in the 50 to 60 range. We continue to monitor closely hospitalizations. Over the course of all of this COVID, we have had 508 individuals that have been hospitalized. And many of those cases that we have seen, not the hospitalized, but they either worked in as a healthcare worker or in a front-facing sort of business job, like in a factory where there are people close together. So individuals who became ill have worked usually in more congregate settings and have worked in healthcare. When we started out with COVID, our age, our average age was about 60. But today, our average age is about 46. And we keep seeing it drop down to lower and lower. To date, we've had about 278 children become affected with COVID-19 under the age of 19 years of age. So we are seeing it start to drop and to be more diverse. Now, if there's any bright spot in any of this, the children don't seem to be as ill and therefore don't require as much hospitalization or intubation. Now, across the region in Summit County, we have ventilator capacity available. We have hospital capacity available, and we closely watch to make sure we're not going to exceed those numbers. You may have heard in states like Florida, Texas, they're having they're converting pediatric units to adult patients. They're using operating rooms as adult patient inpatient hospitalization because of the need for the ICU and the intubation. Those communities have seen far wide increased spread, which has been very deadly as well. In Ohio, we have seen more of a constant upward, but we are fortunate that we live here in a community that has extraordinarily extraordinary medical care. So our survival rates have been very good to some extent. I mean, basically because the care you get here is so exceptional. We have very good facilities. So let's talk about these SARS bug. What is this virus? And then let's just talk briefly about why we worry about it. If many of you remember, in 2008, for about five months, we had SARS-CoV-1 circulating. It was circulating in the general public. There were 39 cases in the United States, and all of those were travel-related. So it seems like SARS-CoV-1 came, and then SARS-CoV-1 just disappeared. It fizzled out and went away. This, however, this is SARS-CoV-2, most likely came from a bat to a human and then was able to replicate in the human and be able then to be spread from human to human, called a zoonotic disease. This happens a lot with viruses. You may remember swine flu from pigs. You know, there's any number of times this happens. So the danger in this is it's a new virus. And even though we had SARS-CoV-1, and this is SARS-CoV-2, it acts very different than the first time around. I don't think I have to tell anybody about the worldwide devastation and shutdown that it has caused. This virus replicates more in the upper respiratory system. So it makes it much more easy for you to cough it out if you yell. If you're just normal breathing, it's easier to spread. The first SARS-CoV-1 replicated in the lower lungs, which made it more difficult for people to spread it to each other. So that is why there are the recommendations that individuals wear masks to catch these droplets that come off of your breath. It's why we recommend people don't sing in choirs, talk loudly or yell, because that's why you get the spread of the virus. Now, it's a virus. It's heavy. It's heavier than air. So it goes out into the air. It can stay suspended for a period of time, but then it eventually drops to a surface. And that's why we have the recommendation to wash frequently touched surfaces often, cover your cough and sneeze, wear a mask at all times when you can't socially distance at least six feet. Now, many of you may have heard that the Academy of Pediatrics came out and said children can separate three feet. And that's probably more because they're little and they're closer to the ground, and they also don't talk and cough as loud. And if they have a mask on, for sure, they probably would not be able to spread as much as an adult. However, there has been some research that children zero to 10 can spread equally as much as an adult. But these recommendations are in place so that we can control the spread of the virus and that we can keep people from getting sick. Now, testing, many of you may have heard, testing has been a problem. Testing has been a problem in the United States and around the country. And right now, we're experiencing somewhat of a testing shortage again. And that is because what's happening is the southern states have needed so much testing because of the virus spike. A lot of the reagents and the test kits are going there. But a lot of it's very difficult to understand why can't we make test kits? Well, who knew before all of this that most of the nasal swabs that were used to swab for the test in your nose, they were made in Italy, and you all know what happened in Italy. Most of the reagents that were made for the testing happened in China. So China was dang near shut down. So there's been around the world these shortages of supplies. What we're worried about next is with flu season coming in the fall, you use the same test kit where you stick it up your nose and swab around and then stick it in a viral transport medium, and you take it to a lab. So we're afraid that again, we're going to see some of these shortages of the test kits and not be adequate be able to adequately test in order to control a disease. That's where some of our concerns come from. Now, many of you may have heard about contact tracing. Contact tracing has always been something public health has done. We contact trace all the time, very quietly and respectfully behind the scenes. We've always contact traced anybody who has HIV, tuberculosis, any sort of communicable disease in order to try to control that disease spread. With COVID-19 and a lot of people having the virus, contact tracing has become far more known in the literature and far more known in the media. They've been really advertising contact tracing. I want to assure all of you that it is still done very quietly and respectfully behind the scenes and that we are very respectful of individuals' rights. So what happens if somebody is positive? We ask them to give us the names of people that they may have been in contact with 24 to 48 hours before they became sick. Okay, started to show symptoms. Now, when we talk about symptoms of COVID-19, there could be a range. I've talked to people who told me I never had anything. I didn't even have a headache. I didn't even know. I got tested because I had to get tested. I had no idea. Those are called silent spreaders. Those are people who have the disease but don't realize they have the disease. So what we do is that we try to find out everybody that person has been in contact with, and then we notify them and assess their risk and try to figure out what they should do next and how they should best care for themselves. The guidance changes all the time on how long people need to stay in quarantine or isolation. Isolation is when you're ill. So we put you in isolation if you're a sick person, and then we tell you, you have to be you can't have a fever for 24 hours, and you have to be at least 10 days when your symptoms are gone, and then we'll let you come out of isolation. However, if you're quarantined and you might get sick, we think you might have the possibility to get sick because you were exposed, you might have to stay longer. You might have to stay 14 days to make sure during all of that time, you don't break with the disease. Anytime during those 14 days, you could get COVID-19. You could develop the symptoms or be asymptomatic. And because testing has been in short supply, it's been difficult for us to test people to get them out of quarantine or isolation. So we've been relying on clinical symptoms and helping people be able then to go back to work, to go back to their families, back to their jobs, and be able then to continue. Now, I want to talk about another group of folks. We are beginning to see individuals who don't fully recover from COVID-19. There are individuals who continue, once they have had the disease, they continue to have system involvement. They might have neurological involvement. They might have heart problems, kidney problems. There's any number of problems, extreme fatigue. There's all sorts of things that go on for a longer period of time than we originally knew. The state says, once you get diagnosed and once you are no longer in quarantine, and if you haven't died, then we count you as recovered, to be honest with you. So really, though, but that isn't the whole story. Not everyone recovers equally well. And so we want to caution people. There's there seems to be some, you know, misinterpretation out there that, well, if you get COVID, you know, unless you're really old or you have some underlying condition, that you'll you'll be fine. Maybe not. And so that's why we're so cautious and try to prevent individuals from ever getting the disease in the first place. But, you know, it's going to be a pop quiz at the end, but what can you do? You wear a mask, you stay six feet away from individuals, and you really wash your hands frequently, and you wipe off surfaces. And if you do that, you can greatly reduce the spread of disease and protect yourself as well. And it doesn't have to be medical-grade PPE. A cloth mask that you're wearing protects people around you. A cloth mask that you're wearing protects people around you. And then when they're wearing the mask, it protects, um, those, you from those other people. Now let me just talk for a minute about, um, families in isolation and quarantine and staying home and then these family parties. The orders that the governor, um, gives out have been a little bit confusing for folks. It doesn't make sense that you can't have 10 people at a meeting, that you can have 300 people in your backyard. You can have 300 people at a wedding. It really does mix people up. But the intent was never that people have these huge parties at their home. And what we're seeing now is we're seeing, because there aren't restrictions. We're seeing these parties that crop up where people invite 50 to 60, maybe relatives, friends. And they feel safe with them because they know them. But it doesn't mean you can't get COVID from your relatives. Um, and so we're seeing outbreaks crop up now with COVID-19 from these large family gatherings. Weddings, sports play, um, bus trips, church trips, community picnics. We're seeing them start, because I think what happens is people want, people start to let their guard down. And especially if you know your family, you're thinking, oh, it's my sister, it's my brother, you know? And you start to think, well, no. The same thing happens with isolation and quarantine in families. Um, people will go get a COVID test, then run around and do their regular business until, if you have a COVID test pending, you should not be out running around in the community. You should be home waiting until that test result comes back. Because this is a communicable disease. It's not like getting your cholesterol checked where it's not going to impact anyone else. So if you went to get a COVID test, you should stay home in quarantine or isolation, depending on if you're sick, until you get that test result. The last thing I want to talk about, and I want to leave time for questions, um, is I want to talk about travel. Again, from about June, it would have been June 23rd through like July 23rd. We've had about 1,100 cases of COVID-19. And out of that, we've had about 150 of those cases, um, related to travel. So about 10, 10, 15% are related to travel. So we have individuals going on vacations, going to Florida, Texas, Arizona, California, the Carolinas. And are having, um, exposures there and then bringing it back with them. And I always get asked, is air, is air travel safe? Air travel bothers me only in that there is air recirculated on certain airplanes. And if you're on a newer airplane, probably argue you've got Kappa filters on there and it's a little different. Airlines are mandating masks and according to airline industry, um, leaders. Um, if you don't wear a mask, you'll be asked to leave. Um, but I would tell individuals, the longer you're in a confined area for a greater length of time. You must leave that mask on. Stay as far away from people as you can. And I know that's hard on an airplane because individuals are now, they're now selling, airlines are now selling those middle seats again. So they are crowded conditions. There's a big difference on going on a vacation and going to a condo, driving to a condo, staying in a condo, staying in a hotel room. And not hanging out at night in clubs or mixing with a lot of people you don't know. Then going somewhere like Miami, Florida and hanging out on the beaches, the clubs, going out at night, your risk is much greater. And so there are recommendations now that if you go to areas that have a positivity rate of greater than 15%, that when you come back to Ohio, you self-quarantine for two weeks. Some employers will let you do that, others won't. Um, and you know, I'm sure that it's individualized, those are just recommendations. But I would tell you, you have to be very careful with travel. Especially if you have underlying health conditions. Or if you have any sort of, um, underlying lung disease like COPD or diabetes. You need to be very, very careful when traveling. Um, because this, this virus is two times as contagious as the flu. Um, I mean, it's not as contagious as something like measles. But it's very contagious. It's easily spread person to person. And we are seeing this spike in cases. And the more we can all do to mask, um, you know, stay six feet apart, whatever. The more we can do that as a community, the better our numbers will work. And it's particularly important for our schools. Um, because schools are trying to get kids back in. And they've gone, they've made some yeoman's work and they have just worked their tails off. Trying to get kids back in school safely. Um, and so it all, it will take all of us because the fear is, you know, then if children go to school or children go here and they bring it home to sick adults. So we all have to be vigilant in our response to try to help everybody be safe. So our children can stay in school and learn with a professional teacher. Um, which I think is important for kids and their social and emotional development. I mean, children have, children are living in a time now that none of us have ever lived in. And think about how many times you shake your head and don't understand what's going on. I mean, I feel like in March, we got dropped into an alternate universe and we still haven't come out on the other end yet. Um, and so think about children and what they must be thinking in this whole thing. I mean, it's tough, um, to try to deal with all this. And I have to say, I'm going to make one more comment and I'm going to be quiet. So we have a little bit of time for questions. But vaccine is on the horizon, but again, it's a new virus. Um, and we don't know when that'll be here. And we don't know how it'll be distributed, we don't know what the plan will be. Um, but we are hopeful that we do get a vaccine that might help us, um, battle COVID-19. Even if it's becomes like a flu shot where you take it every year. Um, maybe then it would be able to help us go back to a far more, when it quote unquote, normal life. That we all have known, excuse me, right now we miss, we all miss it. Excuse me. Choked. So I'm glad to take any questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, if people are tested more than once, then do they get counted more than once?
No, no, they do not. The system, we have, it's called a, um, online odors, it's the Ohio Disease Reporting System. Once you're entered in there and you're identified. And because it's a class A reportable disease, it always goes into odors. And so that system automatically identifies you again as a case. But it's not counted twice, you're only counted once.
Okay, because there's a lot of people going around.
Yeah.
Right? Saying they were tested in Summit County, they were tested in Kyle County, that's why.
No, you're only counted once.
Okay, okay. And then are people taken off of that count once they've recovered?
Well, that's the recovery number. And so what they do is yeah, as soon as, when they've recovered, like it says right now, we've had 3,126 confirmed cases to date. Once they leave the odor system, that's our number to date. We don't put out the recovered yet because the state is just in the process of collecting that data. The state set the parameter. So what we'll be able to give you eventually is how many people got tested. You know, how many actual tests we did. Then we'll be able to give you out of the 3,126 we have right now, 1,500 have, uh, recovered. But what you can look at, you see what I'm saying? But what, how they're calculating that number is they're saying if you were in our system. You now have left our system, we close your case. And then you're not dead, then we're considering you recovered. And that was the whole point about, we don't know how well you've recovered. And that's what some of the research is now happening to try to figure out how well people have recovered.
Thank you.
Donna, I have a question. Um, first of all, thank you so much for your presentation. Um, so Dr. Fauci has, um, I've seen the news that he's saying that Ohio could be, um, just on the cusp of maybe being an epicenter at some point soon. What, what do you, can you expand on that?
Yes, what he's referring to is the level of community spread that we have. Um, we have about 90% of all of our cases are coming from community spread. Meaning it didn't come out of a long-term care facility, it wasn't hooked to a manufacturing firm. It wasn't hooked to a business, it wasn't hooked anywhere. But somebody developed COVID-19. And they maybe know where, but they don't really know where. So when you have a wide amount of community spread. What, with limited testing, what you'll see is those cases continue to climb. So he's referencing the fact that we have had this widespread in the community. Um, and even now when the nursing homes started doing a little bit of these visits. We did, we did see a little bit of an uptick, um, with, you know, people getting to meet in the gardens, see their loved ones. We saw a few cases pop up. But most of those cases came from workers going into the nursing homes to work, not because of the family visits. So yeah, I think Dr. Fauci is saying, listen, you've got community spread and you don't have a lot of testing. So that is ripe for it developing into the next Florida or Texas.
And how many weeks would you say that that could happen?
There's been some modeling that looks at through the governor's office. They've looked at maybe, we're looking into October, November, December, where we would have increased cases and it would get worse. Now, there's some prediction that we're going to have flu will be, you know, widespread this year. But when people practice all of those things, like staying away from each other, wearing a mask. It pretty much kills the flu bug too. I mean, we used to see a spike in March to April. Like come May, we'd see a big uptick of flu cases. Probably because the flu vaccine started to wear off, you know, it's only usually good for about five to six months. And if you get it really early in September, probably by March or April, you lose some of your immunity. So we would see this uptick. Well, when COVID hit, the flu, COVID killed the flu. The regular old flu in Summit County, I mean, it disappeared. And it was because it had very little activity. And it was because of all these practices. But the modeling says that we could be looking at a horrible November, December into January.
Thank you.
I had a question, Donna. We, uh, I had a friend that has a mom in a rest home. And they finally opened it up to where he could visit her in the garden, uh, where before she was actually quarantined to her room before.
Right.
So he wanted to get tested and they basically said he didn't meet the criteria that he couldn't even get tested. Because he didn't have any symptoms.
Right.
So, I mean, what is the criteria to get tested? Do you actually have to have certain symptoms to be able to even get tested?
Well, about two, about maybe six to eight weeks ago, the governor's office, whatever, five priority areas. Because testing was limited when we started. The first priority was you had to be sick, hospitalized or in a long-term care facility. Second priority was you had to have like symptoms and any number of things. But anyway, it was all the way down to you had to just be at risk, working in occupation like healthcare. Okay, first responder. And the fifth category was without symptoms, anybody could get a test. Well, we opened up some testing, we had the health district, we did one mass testing, we were getting ready to plan two more. And then Florida and all the South blew up and the testing disappeared again. So right now in Summit County, you pretty much have to have symptoms in order to get a test. Um, and when you, you know, you have symptoms to get a test, then you can usually get one. But again, like I said, if you, if you have symptoms and you have a test, you should stay home until you get the test results. But the problem is because the testing has been so backed up. Um, it's been so backed up that we're not getting results sometimes for eight, nine, 10 days. Well, that doesn't do any good for anybody because you have to get that result quickly.
Right.
And then that way you can help that person. That's why I'm saying if you have a test, stay home until you get that result.
Okay, one more question too. If you got COVID and you know you had it, uh, can you get it again? And can you still be a carrier if you've already had it?
Um, there's some literature that says, yes, you can get it twice. They think there's some short-term antibodies that don't last long. There might be some T cells that last a lot longer, more like your, you know, the part of your immune system that remembers. Um, but to be quite honest with you. We have seen, um, we have had two cases where people have recovered, tested negative and then have had COVID again. So I think there's some literature that says that's possible. Um, we have seen it for the reason that Laura was asking, you know, your case comes in again through odors. It's a separate, whole different lab work. It's been three months since your first case. You were cleared back to work and then you have it again. So we do believe you can get it again. And that's been some of the difficulty with creating the vaccine is knowing how long that, those antibodies last.
You, uh, you, you mentioned, uh, well, first of all, that very, very great, great presentation.
Thank you.
Informative. Um, you mentioned, um, severity, uh, and symptoms, uh, and its correlation with, uh, the age demographics. Uh, I was wondering, had there's been some serology done on, uh, the correlation of severity and symptoms as it relates to genetic variations and, and viral strain?
I don't know that. I have no, I have not heard that. It would make sense, it's a good question. Um, I can try to find out for you. I know they've looked at, um, just who gets COVID and how, you know, trying to figure out what that long-term. Who gets really sick, who recovers really well? We've had some really, really sick people who have absolutely no underlying conditions. So I don't know, I, to my knowledge, there's only been identified two or three COVID strains that have been out there circulating. That have actually mutated. Um, so I don't know the answer to that question, although it's an excellent question.
Yeah, because I, I, I think we're spending a lot of time trying to conceptualize severity with, you know, the demographic age. And I'm just wondering if there should be a different approach, you know, outside of age. Because we, we keep finding that that's not really the, the, a contributing factor to severity of disease. I'm just wondering if it's something more scientific.
Yep, you're absolutely right.
Donna, will you be recommending everyone get flu shots this fall?
Yes, we always do. We tell people to get a flu shot. I mean, it's not a perfect match ever, you know, you certainly can't predict how these bugs act. They do change. But when you look at what's circulating in the Southern Hemisphere. They then, um, create a vaccine that mirrors whatever happens usually in the, in the Southern Hemisphere. We see here in the Northern Hemisphere. So, you know, they're opposite season. And so we try to make that flu vaccine as effective as possible. Last year it was a good mix, it was a good hit, it was about 60 to 70% effective.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Donna, what authority does your office have to enforce, uh, wearing masks or social distancing? Or telling cities or school districts, so what they can and cannot do?
Well, it depends on how you interpret it. There are a variety of powers given to public health during a communicable disease. We can issue orders, we can issue enforcement. The governor has in his order asked that we enforce the mask order. Meaning that we go out and try to help individuals and companies and businesses be successful. The, as far as the schools go, when, and when I say enforcement, we don't issue fines or tickets. What we do is we go out and try to educate and promote that businesses are compliant and individuals are compliant. Now some cities, villages, townships, mostly cities and villages have passed separate mask ordinances. And when that hap- And when that happens, they are, they give us then through an MOU their power for us to go out and find businesses. That's what happened during Smoke Free Ohio. So that we're able then to find a business if you're not compliant with masks or people. But really, finding someone doesn't help us get people with their mouths covered. We would rather have the compliance. We want people just to wear the dang mask so nobody else gets sick. Okay? Now, in regards to school, the governor again has ordered that the schools can do what they want. The schools have priority, they know their communities best. And that we, we don't have to approve their plans, but merely we have to help them and get what we think is the best plan they have. Now, I can tell you, the schools in Summit County have been very good at trying to do everything exactly right. Those folks have gotten so much guidance from CDC, OEE, the governor's office, us. They've tried to take it all and put it into the best plan. Now, there is a public health emergency declared. We could issue orders, abort a health order. But we don't do that unless the situation would get a lot worse.
May I ask, it's maybe a little outside of the scope of what we're doing here today. Like I, I want to do everything we can to protect our community. Like I'm a community member and love our, love our country here. I want to do what we can do. And there's a couple of sides that obviously it's a very polarizing topic. And as the, the, the public health system is looking at, you know, COVID, very real and very dangerous, how is it that you have had conversations about the rest of the health of our people as it relates to like the suicide hotline number being up into like the 900% more? Potential domestic violence or abuse of children that we don't have eyes on things. But so, there's so many other things besides economics that are in the healthcare realm. What kind of conversations are being had about the things that we, I might suggest we have a little more empirical evidence of as a pandemic, which takes a long time to truly understand. But how are these things being, what's the conversations like about weighing things out?
Michael, that's a great point and a great question. There's a lot of concern. The real damage, other than loss of life and the economics, there, the death or the, the death and disability that a pandemic causes, we will see 20 to 30 to 40 to 50 years from now. If we don't get kids back in school, if we aren't able then to have individuals be able to go back to the hospital for preventive testing. One of my biggest fears right now is preventive testing, individuals are not getting it done. I know people that won't even get their teeth cleaned because they're so afraid to go to the dentist. So we're going to have to look now, and I agree with you, the suicide numbers are up, the actual mental health numbers, the alcohol. Alcohol sales are up more than ever. And that is what you see when you have these sorts of national crises. And I would tell you that bringing that to the forefront is our intention if we can ever get to a point where we can slow down on the COVID mitigation and response. But we were still so much into, you know, we just finished our Community Health Improvement Plan and we just finished our Community Health Assessment. That kind of, we just like kind of poof, it disappeared in like a day because now our problems will be so much more magnified by the social determinants of health. And what happens during this next, you know, oh, excuse me, I have allergies, okay, I have really bad allergies. You sneeze now, you have to explain your sneezes, excuse me. There will be, you know, five, six, 10, 20, 30, 40 years, you will see the ill effects of this pandemic.
We're starting to run out of time, does anybody else have any quick questions? Well, thank you, Donna. As you can see, whenever we have a lot of questions, you know that the subject was very interesting, which we knew it would be. And, and what you presented was fantastic, so.
Well, I want you to be safe and wear a mask. And stay that heck away from people. Okay?
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's what it's all about, being safe. And we're trying to do that through Rotary and we're trying to help people through Rotary trying to figure out how we can do our community service while being safe. So, so thank you for the information you brought us. Our meeting's almost over, you're almost, you're welcome to stay with us. But if you'd like to leave, Donna, you're more than welcome to, I just.
I have a one o'clock I'm going to jump on, so this worked out well, okay?
All right, thanks again, Donna.
Very much, I appreciate the opportunity. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, everybody, I just have a few quick announcements. August 11th next week, we have Al Palowski. If anyone doesn't know who Al Palowski is, boy, some big thunder just hit Macedonia here. Al Palowski is the sportscast for Sport Time Ohio and sometimes Channel 3 News. He's going to be with us next week and talk about COVID-19 and sports. So that should be really fun and interesting next week. Safety Town's all coming up next week, August 10th through 14th. We've already started putting up some of the signs and some of the storefronts. We're going to be getting a few more of those this week. Anyone that wants to help, let me know. I'll be putting out an email and it shouldn't take us too long. Probably about five or six of us can put the storefronts up. But we'll be advising on when we're going to get those storefronts because we're going to have to get those up this week. So we're ready to kick off Safety Town next week. Bill, did you have anything to add to that?
Got a question regarding Safety Town.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to have masks available for the?
You're talking masks?
Masks.
Yes. I could certainly supply that through specialty lubricants. I was planning on bringing some. I'm sure all the students now, the YMCA, we, you know, everyone that's participating are going to, are going to be wearing masks and everything.
That's good, I was going to say, they've got all kinds, I could pick them up at Costco, but you've got them, okay?
Yeah, I can, I was going to talk to Derek and, and handle that. That's your D1?
That's Howard.
That's how we're doing that?
Yeah.
Howard, reviewing your screen. Let's see, viewing options.
Well, going back to me, everything is, I'm still trying, I'm still trying to get all the ends tied up. And I've got new clients that are possibly wanting to buy a storefront. We're just working our heads off trying to make that Monday deadline.
Okay, just keep me posted on that, Bill, what I can do for you, all right? And bottom line is we got to get these storefronts up before Monday.
10:4.
Okay. Shoebox thing's still rolling, we still need some participants in the Shoebox program. Is the list filled up yet, Debbie, or no?
I didn't check it today. Check it after this.
All right, we'll give a report on that next week. We still got a lot of time on that, but I'd like more participants with the Shoebox. Reverse raffles February 6th, so keep that on your docket. Hopefully that can still happen.
Yeah.
Donate fruit and perishable goods to the Emergency Assistance Center. Please keep them in, in your thoughts and don't forget to stop by and donate. Anybody else have anything to contribute? Okay, with that being said, I'm looking forward to seeing everybody next week. Meeting adjourned, thank you very much, great meeting, thank you, everybody.